Yeah, we can hear your client.
Oh, great.
It's the no residents in the village not watching this for whom this is being done.
Understood. Perpetuity. We moved in two years ago to Six West Home Place. We undertook a renovation at the time and didn't have the money to complete the basement renovation and decided to move forward with that now. And we're on our way to town that we hadn't kept the application open. So we've gone through the ZVA process and the ARB process and we're simply reopening this so we can pull the apartment and get the work done.
Okay. Did you have a proof of mailing?
Oh, I do and it's at my property so I can go back and get it and bring it back to you.
You don't have to do that. Bring it or have somebody bring it tomorrow to the...
Sure. It's just around the corner.
Yeah, I know. The clerk's office will accept it and will accept your representation that you sent it.
Okay.
Okay, I do remember this application. I remember it pretty clearly after visiting the property on Sunday. It's pretty straightforward. You've got a basement and there is a, what, a bathroom in there?
The previous owner apparently put a bathroom in and so in order to legalize it and get a certificate of occupancy rather than a letter of null effect, we've been required to, you know, per fire code to bring it up to code by getting a knee red down the backyard. We actually looked into doing a window but because of the peculiarities of our lot being nonconforming and having to be within four feet of the lot line on the east and west sides of the property, we were compelled to put in a 36-inch door at full height.
Okay. All right. And you do have quite good screening on either side, which I think helps your application.
Yes.
Anyone else have comments or questions on this one?
Nothing's changed in the two years?
Nothing's changed in terms of the house and our neighbors.
The house, neighbors.
Not a thing. Nobody's bought or sold.
Okay. Now move the approval of this application.
I'll second it.
On favor from the left, Thomas?
Aye.
Yes.
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 Yep. Thank you very much.
You needed five, you got seven. You're doing very well.
All right.
Thank you.
Go with it.
Okay.
Thank you very, very much, everyone. I appreciate it.
You too. Don't forget the notices when you have time.
Thanks, Artie.
Good. Next up, Friedman and Regal on River View Road.
Good. Oh, I'm sorry. You don't look like Friedman Regal to me. Good evening. I didn't have time to depress. I wanted to put a jacket on.
Yeah, it's points off, so we'll see how it goes.
I'm just glad I'm going to knock out on this application.
The fact that you live next door doesn't make any difference.
Oh, I see. My name is Chris Carthy. I'm the principal of Pools of Perfection at Armac and we were just the planning board for this project. So the history here is the Friedman's Regals purchased this home in 2007 with the existing patio. And the existing patio was a concrete patio and I made the era of replacing that patio last year with a blue stone patio. So essentially that concrete was buckled and cracked and the Regals finally pulled the trigger and said, "Look, they want me to replace the patio." So I replaced it in time in the footprint, same footprint. And in the process of doing that, the building inspector said to me, "No, no, you've got the apartment for that." And I said, "Okay, I've got the apartment for that." In the process of doing that, I discovered that the people who built the pool some, a few years ago, built the pool and did not correctly file the patio. They filed a, they may not have filed the patio at all. The assessor was good enough to pick up some patio and put it on the tax card and assess for it, but the actual square footage of the patio was not recorded correctly. So with that said, what I did then is I went and surveyed the property, created a site plan, collected existing footprint, went to the planning board, and as we all know, of course, we discovered that our coverage is, the existing coverage is too high. I then went and polled all of the homes that are on the contact list and did their coverage chart. And in the process of doing that, I discovered that, of course, the Friedman's are high but they're not the highest. And I'm sure you received from me the chart that shows other properties near coverage. So the bottom line is, the people coming before you file me...
I'm looking at the papers I have. I don't have something like that.
Should be in, yeah, should be this.
Show me what it looks like.
Yeah.
That doesn't look familiar to me.
No. We've got, I've got the spread, you know, the big spreadsheet.
This gentleman over here has it.
Well, he's a better person.
Yeah, I know. I'm not the same.
There it is. It's separate back of all of those.
I have a page.
I'm laughing. I'll read them from me not wearing the cup.
Okay. Except the back, first fall away at the back and wall will be...
Oh, wait, 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 wait. Sorry. Sorry. I had it separated.
Okay. Go ahead, please.
So the bottom line is, there was an existing footprint with absolutely no good drainage. What the Friedman's Regals are bringing to the table here is they can't do much to change this because the pool is built already and the structure of the pool is sitting in their backyard. And the patio between the pool and the house is sort of fixed. I mean, you literally could be cutting a hole in it to try to create an pervious surface, you know? Pervious, I'm sorry. Create pervious surface. So there's really no room for more pervious surface.
I don't know.
You want to ask me something?
We didn't see...
Oh, I'll ask you a few questions.
Yeah, I don't know. I had a green card on the... Oh, right. The mailing.
Oh, yeah. Thank you all for this.
Thanks, Artie.
Oh, great.
Why don't you finish with your initial thoughts? There'll be questions.
So, so the bottom line is, you know, there's not much they can do about it. We have, on the other hand, made a proposal to the town to improve the drainage on the lot as well to capture some of that rainwater and move it into infiltrators down below, which doesn't exist right now.
And that proposal was before whom?
That was before the planning board and that's part of the plan in front of your net.
But the planning board has not passed on that yet.
Planning board referred me to you because I need a variance in order to finish this up. I have to get the variance, I believe, from you and then I have to go back to the planning board to button up the pervious surface.
We have a running multi-year debate with them about what the proper water is, but you're the ping pong ball in that contest, so we don't have to take it up with you. I'm sorry. I'm tripping it up.
Okay, I think, so I mean, the bottom line is, again, they bought the house 2007, it's an existing pool, existing patio. They're willing to improve the drainage. They've made a submission to improve the drainage and I think that's pretty much it.
You want us to do a chart?
Chart? Yes.
What is your percentage over?
Yes, that's a good question. I just need to get my chart back.
Oh, sorry.
Yep. There you go.
So, okay, start with, I guess, your big spreadsheet. That shows the allowable and what's over.
What does existing and proposed mean? Because the way I hear your application, your proposal is...
It's existing.
Yes. Do you think that question, I think I...
Yeah, it's chart on page two or three of the spreadsheet. Zoning conformance stable, I have 20 zone. You've got numbers under existing and numbers under proposed and what you just described sounds like existing and what's proposed, but they're different.
It is true, except that what, let me explain. Yeah, I agree with you. It is a little, was a little confusing. It took a little time to get to that. What we had to do is call existing, what is technically on the map now, what the town has recorded as existing. We couldn't call existing what is on the map now that they bought because it wasn't even recorded. It was never recorded properly. So this survey records it properly and so even though it's existing and we call that, we make even a footnote which says, yes, this is, this is what's there, it's not existing on the original survey that's in the town files. So my survey brings it up to date and it's occurring, but it's, that's why it's called proposed. Even though it's, it's existing, it's there, it's not existing legally and that's the difference.
Okay. I mean, I think normally the existing column is a representation of what's there, but your explanation makes it pretty clear. As I computed as well, you may find ambiguity.
I looked at the town engineer.
It looks to me like you're 43% over.
Yeah, that's what I got. For me.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So you're saying on your chart that you committed 3716, is that correct?
Allowable GLC, River View Road. I have 3717, right?
Correct. And you have existing, which is only 200, a little bit more than 200, square feet over that existing. Is that the 200 square feet you got as a gift from the assessor?
No.
Look at your, you know, your drawing here. If you... Yeah, I didn't know we did it wrong, but two or three is proposed. That's what I was looking at, yeah.
Oh, wait a minute. The data in the above line was obtained from the property cards on file with the town of Greenberg. Okay, that line just shows you what the town of Greenberg had on file for the property card. Then the next line says the data in the above line was obtained from the current survey and it does not include the undocumented improvements.
What are you reading? What are you looking at? No, I'm looking, I'm looking at sheet two or three. Can you take us to the table at sheet two or three, please? That's okay. So the top left box.
That's three or three.
Next three or three, yeah.
Page two, three, here we go. Okay. Go ahead, I'm sorry.
So, correct me if I'm wrong, but in the table at the top says required, permitted. You come down to a 3716, 3717, you said.
Yes.
What is that? That's allowable?
Correct.
Okay. What's to the right of that? 3938.
That's what is recorded on the map with the town now.
That's what the assessor, as you said, you might say.
Correct.
200 square feet as a gift.
Correct.
In the drawing, how does that relate to what says existing flagstone patio?
Does it?
Is that separate from 39?
I don't think it relates at all quite.
Okay, okay.
I can't find a relationship between what is documented and what is.
Okay.
I really can't find a good quality relationship.
I understand.
Doesn't the tax assistant card have a signature of?
Yes.
Now what does it show?
That sketch which is in here, that sketch is in here. You go to two, you'll see 286 River View Road, then go to 200 River View Road in that right here. And that is your sketch and...
Oh, this is an aerial, isn't it? An aerial? I'm not sure what you're looking at.
I'm looking at this now.
Just on the rear view.
Yeah.
Okay.
This is from the assessor's card.
Now what does it pretend to show?
What it pretends to show is spa or hot tub. It has it as a quantity of one, like once...
Well, it just has an X there. Is that what that is?
Yep.
Doesn't show the outline of it or the size or the depth?
This is four area spa.
Okay. So it's, so...
It's on the list.
Wow. And what year is this out of?
I wasn't actually, wasn't able to find that out exactly. It was, you know, before 2000, well before 2007. We guessed 1980s, 1990s, you know, we're not sure.
This was on 2014, solid.
No, when the pool was built.
Right, but this says 2014, so this is, the assessor's is...
The assessor's card.
Tyler Technologies, so we're all familiar with it.
This is even the new assessor's.
Okay, so you're getting, you're getting taxed on 3938, but you've had 5,300 square feet there.
Correct.
And your proposal is...
They bought the house with 5,300 square feet.
Yeah, your proposal is just to keep it.
Yes, correct. And essentially now I hope I'm answering your question about, because it's coming back to me now, your, your question about what is required, existing, proposed. You're right that existing and proposed in reality are the same, but we couldn't put it that way because then you wouldn't know what the actual documents have on file now compared to where we're going with the new...
Actually, existing almost, I mean, without exception for two decades or more, means what's on the property. It doesn't have anything to do with the tax records, okay? But you've explained this to us, so you're not, you're not trying to misdirect us, right? I appreciate that.
Well, I have another question for you. So it says proposed, it totals 5,297.
Correct.
Yeah, below that it says undocumented condition, it says 5,317. Why is that?
I don't remember what that was. I don't remember. That was like a 65 square foot. I don't know. I don't know what to credit that to.
So that number's different. And although it looks like...
I vaguely remember that, having that, asking myself that question at one point. I don't remember what that 65 square foot difference is or whatever that was.
So it looks like the assessor left off that patio of 937 square feet and its other patio remnants at 442 square?
Or, quite frankly, because we all know, somebody put that patio in after the assessor was there for the pool and that was it. The assessor hasn't been back, it's, it's very likely that the assessor hasn't been back to the house since the pool was built. I mean, unless the assessor's making a business.
Says to reassessment, yes.
Right? I mean, isn't that typical practice?
Well, we were reassessed just two years ago, so they should have been back within the last two years.
Yeah.
My last question.
I doubt it. I'm sorry.
But they may not have captured.
So on your two or three, you show existing flagstone patio and then proposed patio. Why is there difference? Since they're all there, right? They're all existing, present.
No, they're not.
One's torn up.
So there's nothing there, right?
No, it's, it's partly flagstone and the rest you're waiting to do again, correct?
It's torn up. It's rubble, it's rubble right now. Have you been out there?
Yes.
Yes. You saw the back is basically rubble and it's waiting to be finished.
Now, here's, here's the answer to Artie's, it doesn't really answer, but explains. You have on this chart, not the chart in the upper left-hand corner, but the diagram in the middle, proposed patio maps existing 422 and on your undocumented condition chart that you and Artie were looking at, it says 442. There's your difference of 20.
Yeah, where's 937?
937 is...
That's the existing flagstone patio.
Well, I mean, here again, existing pool in your chart is 944, includes the spa and the pool on your drawing is 870 and the spa is 74, so between the two, that's 944. So that number tracks.
Yeah.
But, but look, I mean, here's the problem. If you just, it come to us, your clients have come to us and said, "We want to put in a pool and a patio." And you showed us that it was 43% over without being able to go back and rewrite history, which doesn't exist. That's a big number.
Agreed.
And I suspect what we would have said to you is, "We understand why you want a pool and why you want a patio." That's too much.
I agree with you.
And, you know, this chart you put together showing the other properties and the percentage that they're over, most over on any of them is 105. Many of them are under 100% except one.
Correct.
Which is not right in the immediate area, it's up the street.
Between six versus 200.
Yeah. It's not right there, but it's on the same street, I give you that. And that's 154%.
Yeah.
So, you know, why should we, especially when you've got the remnants torn up, why, why do you think it's appropriate for us to just say, "Go ahead and do it again"?
I understand the question. There's two things we're bringing to the table. One, we are improving the overall drainage on the lot. There is no drainage on the lot right now, so we're making that effort to improve the drainage on the lot. And quite frankly, it's an existing footprint that the homeowner has bought. It's demoed, it's right there.
Demoed, what do you mean?
The, that, that concrete that's behind the pool is all really talking about, not puzzles. At this point, again, compared to the whole, quite frankly, the smallest piece of the whole puzzle that's there on the backside of the pool. Unfortunately, it's the smallest piece of the puzzle and it's, it's almost insignificant to the egregious overage, you know, I mean, what's, what's there, I'm not even spitting that. All I'm really saying is not much on the back. It finishes the site and they had an existing concrete patio there that they've lived with. The property's had it probably for 20 some odd years and what they did is improve it and they're willing to bite the bullet and improve the drainage on the lot. And again, I'm not disputing with you. As a cool person, I sit on the planning board of the county north council. I would never come before a planning board and say, "Put something 43 years ago." I appreciate that that is egregious, but I would say to you this, on the other hand, these folks bought the house with this overage. They're kind of jammed up. They're a little jammed up. They bought a house with this kind of overage. I don't know how they get out of it, really, and because the pool is spaced so far from the house, most of the coverage curves between the pool and the house. And the way you've been there, the way you've been, no way to hide it. No way to hide it.
How you could reduce the size?
How you reduce that size? It's only in the span of the pool.
Take off, no, take off. Six feet on each side. You still got a very ample patio going out to the pool.
In other words, you know, when you come down the steps of the back of the house, you come down the back steps of the back of the house, you have to access the patio from this, from that back area. There's retaining walls there, there's some retaining walls, there's an elevation change. That would require a patio, no matter how they size and ice it. And then as you approach the pool, there's patio there. I don't know how you could separate the pool from the patio there either, you know? I really don't see how you could do that.
What's the width of the patio coming out from the house?
The distance between the pool...
No. The other direction, width.
It's just basically the width of the pool. No, the width of the pool.
Pool, okay. The patio doesn't have to be that broad, does it?
Well, again, I don't see how it could be any smaller. It's just basically allowing them access to the pool.
If they walk down a narrow walkway and get to the pool, you don't need a patio that's as wide as the pool is, theoretically.
Yeah, I guess in theory, but again, I would say if you look at this site, the patio skate is really a function of the placement of the pool vis a vis the house. That's how I, that's what I have to tell you. That's what it looks like to me.
But it's the reason your numbers are so big.
I entirely disagree with that, but again, I don't know how to get out of that from the point of view that...
You can make the patio smaller. That's the way you get out of it. And it's demoed right now.
Only the back is demoed.
So the minimum of if you reduce the back, just coping around the edge of the pool.
Correct.
Right? Why couldn't you do that?
You could, in theory, do that. Yes, I've discussed that with them. Could we just, on the backside, just have coping around the back? You could do that. I'm not disputing that.
Now, what does that reduce it by?
It looks like 442, right?
How much?
442. Your patio remnants are 442. Wouldn't it take that much out?
No. Patio remnants come around the spa. Come around to the side of the pool where the spa is. And you could not not have patio around the spa in that area.
Well, it's not going to have a simple...
Over here, over here. And see, this area, I would agree with you. You could argue. I don't think it's, again, like I say, I think at this point what you're getting at is not a whole lot of coverage represented by this. Some, yes, I'm not disputing that, but not a ton represented by this area here. From here to here, again, the equipment is here, the steps of the pool are here, this is a social area. People are walking here. I would say that the pool and the steps of the pool are here. I would say you need patio to come out of the pool to here. So you're talking about this. And what is that? Three feet maybe by 40, 120. I'm not disputing that it's a number. All I'm getting at is...
If your remnants are 442, even if you eliminate from that...
Say it's half.
Maybe one and a half.
You think? From here, this part?
Yeah.
Maybe more than half. What is the number? 442 is the remnants?
That's what you have here. You've got 442 here and 422 on the graph.
Right, that, I believe that. What I'm saying is, let's just say then for round numbers, still, 200 square feet is what I'm talking about there.
You take out half the pool then, is that what you want us to do?
I'm saying, that's what that is. It's not all I'm getting at is compared to the overall problem, it's not, I think it's a cow wagging the dog. I mean, I understand that it's a concession, but it's not, you know, their predicament is that bought a pool that was finished here with a patio all the way around it and the coverage was pre-existing. And if I were doing this from scratch, yes, I would modify the coverage so it's not to be over like that.
There's a line just to the east, to the top right of the spa. It's that line?
I'm sorry, send it again.
There's a diagonal line.
On that diagram.
With the spa, with the tub, this hot tub, just above it to the right of the diagonal line coming across, what's that? In the shaded area, is it?
Here, I'll, if you want to...
I think I see it. It says existing hot tub.
Yeah, above it. So between that and the pool.
That, that crack line? That looks like a crack line?
No, no, no.
If you look at page three, I think it is.
So right here. I think it's that is the right one.
That, okay, that looks like a drain.
Oh.
That looks like a drain. That looks like a pipe or a drain.
Proposed linear deck drain is what you say on page three.
Yes, that's what it is. That looks like a deck drain.
Well, look, you know, you make the case for the fact that they bought the house and all this was there. There is the issue of how much they're over, which is very substantial. There is the fact that what you call the patio remnants have already been torn up and are no longer there, so that undercuts, in my view, some of the equities that you're addressing.
I can appreciate that point. I mean, it's not entirely gone. I mean, it's not entirely gone, it's, the rubble is there.
Right, so you gotta do something with that property area anyway. And, and the spa, you know, off to the, off to the side, I mean, I appreciate the fact that if you've got a hot tub, whatever, you don't want to just come out of there onto grass necessarily, but neither necessarily, do you need the entire remnants that extend all the way around the pool and around the hot tub?
I would say, I would say you need the remnants around the hot tub over to the steps of the pool, over to the steps of the pool. When you come out of the pool, when you come out of the pool...
Yeah.
I would say you need the patio as a landing when you step out of the pool to, you know, come into the social area right here. I would say you need the patio for that.
There's a ladder on this diagonal.
I certainly, I, I can't dispute the fact.
Where's the ladder?
Where's the ladder out of the pool?
I don't know if it's the ladder, where did you say, pool or the tub?
Oh, well, I don't, I don't even know if you used a ladder. A ladder in the pool?
You said when you come out of the pool.
No, steps, the steps for the pool are right here.
Oh, okay, steps, that's what we meant.
Yeah, the steps, yeah. But what I'm getting at is, I, I can't dispute the argument that the back is, I appreciate your point, that's all I can say. It's just that, I mean, at this point in the game, they're so deep into this, you know, they're so deep into it.
Look, what I, I think I'm gonna, anybody else, I'm sorry, can anybody, your questions, comments? Anyone? I mean, what I, what I think you should do is revisit this with, come back to us. First of all, go to the planning board and let's understand whether or not there really is anything to be considered in terms of better drainage that you are going to put into place. I mean, if they, for some reason, don't like what you're proposing, or they want something else, it would be relevant to us to know what, what the final balance is in the equity. I mean, if you're doing something more and the planning board thinks that's, that's valuable, that's one thing.
Interesting.
Number two, I think you should come back and present us with a different plan, not just continuing the existing 43 percent overage that they apparently have enjoyed for several years, for good reason, I understand, I understand why. But it doesn't seem to me you're going to need what you call the remnants that are on the top of the page, I'm not sure what your direction is here, around the pool, the part that you've been talking about is 200 feet, I think it's more than that. And it doesn't seem to me you'll need the entire area around the hot tub, that's too generous patio structure by itself. You need something reasonable to get from the hot tub to the pool or the other way, that's, that's one thing. And, and I would, you know, I would come back and present something to us that's got smaller numbers. And if the alternative, you think the existing flagstone patio can be reduced, and I, I am morally certain it can be, you may not want to, it can be, because it's as wide as the pool and it's the pool, if you wanted to do that instead to reduce your numbers or some combination, you know, I leave that up to you and the applicants. But I, I think as it is, just asking us to approve this 43 percent overage is too much.
I agree.
Yes, I agree with you, I appreciate it, okay? What I would say to that is, first of all, I don't have the heart to rip up the existing blue stone, your blue stone patio, okay? I know I'm not going to come back and propose ripping up the existing blue stone.
The whole thing, we're talking about.
But I'm gonna say, what I am willing to do is go back to them and talk to them about planting the backside of the pool and getting rid of that patio on the backside of the pool. I don't think that's a disaster, okay? And maybe there's a little bit of room here, but I'm really trying to tell you, the steps for the pool are here, I don't see a lot of room here, but again, I can look at that. The other thing is, when I spoke to the planning board last time, we specifically spoke about drainage, in fact, the planning board chair mentioned, now I know, now I know what it's like to be, you know, on a board and doing all this stuff, planning board chair mentioned that he was going to speak to the chair of the zoning board to discuss the improvements of drainage that we're willing to make on the property, so that he would have an understanding of where we're going with this.
Well, I'll tell you, they, they have from time to time been in touch with me about, usually about coverage issues, not about drainage so much. And he, he and I have not spoken about this when I've been down south for six weeks, because I'm like, thought it'd be entertaining to fracture underneath that, so we didn't want to work. So, he may have been trying to talk to me about it and he hasn't done it. In any event, if he wants to have a conversation between now and the next hearing, that's fine, that's fine. But I, I think you should go back and, come back, if you come back with the same, exactly the same things you have now, we'll vote on it. And I can't predict, you know, there's seven very independent people that come out of either one. If you have to come back with a, a reduced application and you've got explanations as to why this and that, but not the other, my own view is your chances would be better, but I, again, can't predict what will happen.
I understand what you're saying. I'm not happy about it, you know, but I understand what you're saying, you know? All right, Silvy, I'll take that, and we'll...
And I would just encourage you, I think you're gonna have to take a haircut on that patio in the front. I think it's between the house and the pool, I think it's too big. I don't think, just my own point of view, taking off the backside is gonna be enough. But, as Bruce says, we're all independent people, but that's my...
You'll get any opinion there, it's not another.
Yeah.
Instead of softening the hard scale.
Yeah, exactly.
When you look at this pool here, and you look at the steps coming down from the upstairs with the raised deck, you know, how do you go from here to there, trace lounges, et cetera, in this area right here, you know, traces, et cetera? But why does this deck, I mean, look offensive in terms of its size?
It's not, I mean, it's not as though, we're, we're not the ARB, we're not trying, we're not trying to evaluate how it looks. When I went around the back, it looked very impressive, it looked really big, and that's, you know, that's part of the problem.
How do you, but you know, my point is, when the pool is here and the house is here, it's difficult to imagine not having patio between those two structures in this case.
You don't need, look, it's not difficult to imagine not having patio the entire way from the house to the pool. You could have something surrounding the pool with plenty of room for chase lounges and chairs and, you know, tables for lunch and all of that, without having the patio as wide as the pool itself. That's, the patio is basically, a big part of it is to connect to the house, and, and you've got, you know, instead of a sidewalk, you've got an entire street closed off, in effect.
So, I mean, I guess what you're getting at is, this section of the patio, you seem to think is subject to change over here, that's the suggestion.
Yeah.
Okay, all right, all right, you made yourself clear, that's for sure.
Okay, thanks for coming in, so we'll adjourn this. No objections? No, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Last but not least, Mr. and Mrs. Quinn, I guess you were here last month, I didn't have to pull the...
Actually, I wasn't here last month. They had different representations, I think, after the, after the meeting, they asked me to, to see if I could help them, so I'm Michael Lewis, I'm really required, I can, I can probably do it, I didn't promise them that I could help them that much. I mean, I think it is very simple, it's a very simple situation here. It's great with the video, I was able to, to watch the meeting from, from the last time. Couple of times...
And you showed up anyway, I commend you for your courage.
And, and, you know, there, there are a few things said that, that, oh, you know, I'm hoping that they were, that they were literal, because they sort of give hope to the process. And one is that the real issue here is the rear setback. The width of the deck is not really a massive problem, the new stairs and coverage is not really the issue here, the issue is the rear. And that, that's essentially a quote, but, and so, I mean, again, you know, I told Steve that, well, we had a discussion, he explained to me his whole stance, and I'm not sure if it's been explained to you before, they, you know, they bought the house with this huge deck on the back. It's a two-family house, they're converting into a single-family house, which is a really nice thing to do there on that block. And as they got into the house, they, after they had the plans, got the permit, it became clear that the levels in the house were different, that they, they were planning on opening doors through from one of the previous drawings into the next, and it turned out that they were two and a half feet on different levels as well. And so, the rentals of that, they've been struggling. But they, they're up to the challenge, and they've, they've rectified that and amended the plans and doing the same. The other thing was, you know, as, as they're moving into Irvington from the city, they were really, really looking forward to this large deck, I mean, they knew it was in disrepair, but they were really looking forward to that as their primary outdoor space, they wanted to be able to see quite a number of people at the table with a grill and just enjoy that sort of thing. And so, they were caught completely off guard by the findings that the deck had not been properly recorded and was not really big. In fact, the only evidence of what was recorded there is from the property card, I think it's 1956 or something, I have here, I think it's mid 50s. If I show a deck that's the same width, 12 feet in depth, instead of the deck that is currently on the building, it's 20 feet in depth. So, it's, it's...
So, did they take down the prior deck and replace it with the 20-foot deck?
Someone did, I, I guess, we don't know how the 20-foot deck got there. It, it's clearly been there a long time, I know, I've visited the side and perhaps some of the rest of the, we probably walked in there, that's not a new deck, that deck is at least 20 years old, so that deck has been there happily for all this time in this two-family residence. And I, I don't know what they were thinking when they walked through and purchased the property, but it doesn't, it didn't look like something that had been smacked in, but obviously been there for a long time. In any case, you know, it's, it's, it exists well into the setback. So, Steve said to me, you know, "Watch the video, tell me what you think, and let's, let's take it from there." And I said, "Listen, you know, they're very clear, give back the depth on this deck as much as you can until you feel like you're literally bleeding and, and hopefully, I'll take that on, on good faith and accept the proposal."
But also, isn't this proposed deck now, with the size on the original card?
The proposed deck is, is slightly larger than what was on the card.
How much, how much, Steve, about?
Two feet. So, the original card was 12, this is 14.3, we reduced it by five foot nine from what is actually there now. And on this diagram with the colors, it, it's a little easier to see graphically. The blue is the old deck, the green is the new deck.
Do you have stairs coming down from the deck now?
Old meaning the one that's there, you know, not old old.
That's right. And the stairs are added as a new element, they were also on the plan previously, and quote unquote, the stairs are not a problem from the, from the video, that's what, that's what I think. You weren't here, so...
I wasn't, but I'm, I'm trying to track the numbers, because you've got, this is your, your spreadsheet?
Yes.
Okay, and maybe it's not yours, maybe it's your predecessor's, but first of all, the existing principal building, 1272, is the same, you're not changing that, right?
Correct.
And the deck and external stairs you have existing at 398 and proposed at 391. If you're taking as much off as you said, why is that difference so small?
We're, we're adding the, we're, because we are adding some widths and stairs to it in this proposal, you can see it right here.
Okay, so that accounts, so how much do the stairs add? Because there was...
Four feet of width.
By what?
11 foot eight, so that's about 48 square feet.
But the stairs were on the other poles, were they, huh?
Correct.
So, the stairs are made constant with what you had, what was here last, last month, right?
That's right, the stairs were added, had been added previously, this...
They aren't there now, there's no stairs now, right, from the deck?
Correct.
Blue you're showing is, is...
Existing, that's existing.
This rectangle, blue, is the existing deck, that's the deck that's there now. The yellow, which if you look through the blue becomes green, is the proposed deck that we're hoping for approval.
And the previous proposed deck was all of that plus the square on the, on the top above the stairs?
Right, that's what's there, that's what's existing on the property for the last 20 years and later.
What I'm saying is, what your proposal was last time was the blue plus the way next to it on top of the orange.
Correct, although we weren't pushing out the four feet as much, it was just the landing, and now they asked if we're going to go out this four feet, we should, we square off this, square off this area. So, the previous application had a, had a landing here and then all of this deck. This application, again, is responding to the idea that it's a setback that's the main objection here. We pulled that back by five foot nine and then squared the deck to the spare to just make it nicer and more regular, and also to give them a little bit more working room for their large table and grill. So, so the difference between where we were before and now is very little in terms of coverage, but it's significant. It's, the coverage is still a little bit better, but it's significant in terms of the setback, where we've locked it back quite a bit from, again, five, five foot nine less into the setback. So, now, we're only, we're, we're still extended into the setback by only, by only by about eight and a half feet.
And the key is, and the key is, when I was there last month, and I had the chance to stand on the deck, you could stand the foot, you know, the deepest part of the deck and look left and right, and there was no other structure anywhere near that deep into the backyard. See, that was one of the main concerns that I had, not just, that's just the measurements of the number of the setback, but rather that there's nothing else.
Of course.
Left to right, and we did suggest that it be scaled back, we hoped it might be scaled back to the original property card, but apparently you stole two more feet.
Well, you know, that's, that, Steve asked me, and maybe I shouldn't say this, especially he's gonna be watching you.
Right.
Right now, yeah.
We'll lock the door.
Or he is watching you, right? I, I said, if we, if, if, I think if we scale back to what's on the property card, it's very hard, I, I think it's, it's very hard, it'd be hard for me to understand why that would get rejected. And he said, "Yeah, but look at the table and look at the thing, please make this deck work for me." And I said, "That's, that's fine, there's certainly no harm in trying, let me put this forward," and it was a dissection we had, that two-foot tree, to really make, and it's, and it makes the deck, it's a significant deck, no denying, it's closer to what they were hoping for when they, when they purchased this house. And I'm hoping that, given the fact that when they buy it and for, for, who knows, at least, at least, you know, 10, 15, 20 years, this has been there, we're pulling it back, we're reducing the overall coverage on the property, we're reducing the setback significantly, and I'm hoping you can have approval on that.
I, I had just seen, reaction was already the first time, you know, standing on the deck, how much it sticks out. I was there yesterday, I wasn't on the deck, but I could imagine being on the, on the deck, and you're still really way, you know, eight and a half feet past where you should be. And so, I had, frankly, had sort of the same reaction I had before, I understand you're trying, but, but to me, it's still, I mean, the, the notion of the three-foot setback was, was clearly a decision made, and everybody else seems to be honoring it, and now you're, you're still, you know, eight and a half feet into it. So, that, that was kind of my reaction.
And it's the rear of the house on the diagram, the rear of the house on the right is at the setback, isn't it?
Oh, pretty much, yeah. And again, the other, the only, the other thing I could say is that, you know, there's a, there's a, an old patio down below that sort of really defines a natural stopping point, and that's, that's where we ended the debt.
So, but the, the, the original deck that was 12 feet was permitted, that was a, right, I mean, that's not...
It was a pre-existing non-conforming, I guess you could say.
Was that, was that pre-existing non-conforming, or was that permitted? Do you know what I mean, or does it even, not even matter, back in 1956?
I don't really know the history of that, of that deck. My, my expectation would be that, and I'm not sure about this, but my expectation would be that if we were to show the property card from 1956, showing that depth there to the building department, that that would be a very strong case for them grandfathering it in as, as a, as recorded.
Well, if...
They've been paying taxes on it for seven years.
They have. The property has, yeah, the property owner's.
Correct, that's correct. So, it's like, oh, you know...
So, by going to two feet deeper, which you're going, what does that put you over? How many more square feet does that add?
Two feet by about, about four and a half square feet.
Well, where you are now is eight and a half feet into the setback, where, where you're proposing now, would be eight and a half feet into the setback. Then, when it was a 12-foot deck way back plan, it would have been six and a half feet into the setback at that point, right?
And I, I agree completely... And I agree completely with your take on it in terms of the feeling of the space standing on the deck. My reaction was exactly the same. Whoa, it's out there. I think that pulling it back this distance is a huge difference, a really significant difference.
We appreciate that, as you can see from the last discussion, we got to the last discussion.
It was a good warm-up.
The other thing is, and I made this little diagram...
Tell us why you need that two feet, though. Can you tell us really why you need two? Other than he has some table he bought already, but far from that.
Well, he hasn't even bought the table yet. I think the idea is that, and it's a soft reason, in that basically, they really wanted, they were looking at this as the primary outdoor space on the property where they were going to have family gatherings of some size.
So it's a 12-foot-deep deck is supposed to be 14.
And he would like to have, and so we laid out the table and the grill on it, and it was tight with 12, but it worked here and I see it 14.
Is your proposal at 14 feet with a red liner?
Yes.
The approach is also this. Okay, that's... We have one. Which is just at the...
That's right. You just brought it back to that lower patio, which is not really affected by setbacks.
How long has that little lower patio been there forever?
It looks old.
Yeah, it's getting older by the minute.
You know, the people, this probably affects the most, besides the president, are the ones in the back that the deck loops over.
Definitely, on the west side.
I mean, any reaction from those neighbors? Has there been any conversations?
Not to my knowledge.
We have proof of mailing last time, right?
Yes. The mailing happened in the previous...
Okay. Any other questions or comments? I'm gonna suggest this, because there were five people present the last time this came up.
No, it was only four.
What was that, right?
Four.
Okay.